Brad Beaver.
Here.
Mark Hall.
Present.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Amy Masalomani.
Present.
Sue Mackey.
Present.
Tim Griffin.
Present.
Steve Nation.
Present.
Madam President, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. This time we will ask for the invocation and pledge. And if you would all bow your heads and pray in your own way, please. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll ask for a reading and approval of the minutes from our executive session, the memorandum from 5:1.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The joint session minutes of the commissioners and council from 5:1.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Council regular meeting minutes from 5:1.
Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to public comments. Anyone from the public wishing to discuss anything on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee and officer reports. I do have one thing. I thought this was great, and I believe everybody received it, but I think when we give money through our nonprofits and kind of through our own grant process at Budget Times, one of the things that I love, and I got very jazzed about this, which teeter between a farm, they actually sent a picture of them utilizing the UTB that ultimately we helped fund. So I think we need more of these.
Yeah.
And are great, so I just want to commend them and what they're doing, and obviously, they're sticking to what they say they're going to spend the money on, so I just wanted to commend them. So that is actually all I have. Just as a reminder, August 7th, we do have an executive session and joint session again at 5 o'clock. Everyone should be aware of that until you get July off for that. So there's all I have. Madam Vice President.
No report as Vice President, but as Chair of the Nonprofit Grant Committee, segueing from the thank you that Amy, or President Masalomani received, that we all received. The grant deadline for nonprofit grants is this Friday, June 7th, so if you are involved in the organization that wishes to apply, you have until Friday at noon.
Thank you. Anything else? Highway.
We did not meet, but there's a few items on the agenda.
Thank you. Finance?
No meeting.
Personnel?
Both.
Anything on major projects?
Major projects didn't meet, but we passed that information at the joint session.
Thank you, sir. Anything under miscellaneous?
Madam President, I have one thing. A just recommendation for Sheriff Quickenbush, and it was, I think it was on April 30th. I apologize, I don't have the DNR officer's name, but there were two sheriff's deputies that came upon an SUV submerged upside down. So I'd like to at least note that was, I have a picture here of Sheriff Quickenbush with Deputy Dixon and with Deputy Hazel, and they both dove into the water, and there's a video available of them submerged, getting this lady out of her SUV underwater. It's just an incredible rescue, but it's such an incredible thing to be a part of, and even just now describing it, Sheriff, it just gives me chills to think about what our sheriff's deputies, what your sheriff's deputies go through. So job well done, I wanted to recognize them and you for what they've done in saving that woman's life.
I will pass it along to them. Thank you for recognizing him.
Anything else under miscellaneous? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have no unfinished business, no table business. We'll open with new business, approval of vendor claims.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to the 2025 proposed council meeting calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion around the calendar? See any dates of conflict or anything?
I may have a conflict on the April meeting.
You can just join in on virtual.
My wife's got a major birthday, and she's asked to go away.
I think we'll survive without you. Just kidding. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Not that we don't want you here, but that's more important. Now we have Beck Superior Hybras, Inc. compliance with statement of benefits, and Tom Foreman, if you'd like to come forward.
Yeah, we're pleased to, but I didn't know if it was updated on that.
Do we need to approve this for the Congress?
Good evening. Have you complied with all the rules we set up for your tax abatements?
We have complied with the open projects. The project from 2014 that was short and closed stands as it was, no updates on that one. Those for 2019 and forward, we have met and exceeded. Total of 61.7 million was approved. We are at 110 million to date to investments, so we appreciate the continued support.
So how many of, I think over the years, we did five or six, how many are still active? Two?
We have a total of three resolutions that are currently active at this point. 50119-1, and then 50119-2, as well as we have Resolution 040214-02 that we complied with as well.
Great, thank you. Do we need a motion here?
I will, yes. Is there any other questions on that? So what I will do is we'll ask for a motion on the real property resolution 04-02-14-02.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll do Resolution 04-02-14-03.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to Resolution CC 050119-2. There are no motions.
Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And finally, we'll move on to personal property resolution 04-02-14-03.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And lastly, personal property resolution CC 050119-1.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much, we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for continuing to invest in Hamilton County.
We will move on to item D, the Recreation Impact Fee Committee Liaison. I shared this information with the group. Unfortunately, Chris Dice had a funeral that he attended for a family member, so he's unable to be here. Sue, I know that you were kind enough to say you would support and support us, and so I do need a motion to approve Sue Mackey representing on the Recreation Impact Fee Committee.
Is that just to appoint her? Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I will make sure that Chris knows. Next on the agenda, an interlocal agreement concerning the one-time distribution of public health funds, Jason LaMaster.
Good evening. I know we've had several of these local, interlocal agreements working with our municipalities this year, and it's been great. This is for, are using some of our preparedness, public health emergency preparedness dollars and grant dollars that we get. We earmark monies for all of our municipalities, and Carmel Fire Department reached out to us and asked to help with the purchase of a Lucas chest compression device, and we thought this was a great project to work on with them, and kind of really falls right along with our AED projects that we've been working on.
I apologize, I did not ask for a motion before some ahead of discussion. Is there any discussion or questions?
What is a Lucas chest compression system?
The Lucas chest compression system, to be totally honest with you, I'd rather do it myself because it is a nice device that does automatic chest compressions. So one of the things that helps is it minimizes interruptions in chest compressions as they go on. As we transfer patients from beds, houses, to cots, to the hospitals and those kinds of things, you can keep good chest compressions going at the same time with an automated device.
Being a person who's received chest compressions, I appreciate that. Thank you.
The device is a great device. It's kind of scary looking when it's working, but it is a great device.
I could speak to that firsthand, seeing them in action and using them. Really good equipment. They, like you said, minimize the time. Chest compressions continue, especially when you're transporting, like somebody said, from house to ambulance to hospital. You never have to stop. There's no transition period, so really good device.
Very cool.
Anything further? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Jason?
Yes.
Do you have that portable defibrillator that we've talked about in the past?
Yes, we do. We actually have three of them on hand, and we've also developed the paperwork and the program.
Okay, I'll be getting with you later in the next week or so. My airplane club has a fly-in on June 22nd, and last year we served 700 breakfasts, so the place is full. So I'll get with you and see if we can get you out there, show us how to do it, and have it on hand.
Absolutely, we're ready to take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Item F, I'm going to open the public hearing for Resolution Number CC 06052024.1. This is a resolution of the County Council of Hamilton County, Indiana, establishing a fund for proceeds to be received from the sale of real estate to the Hamilton County Public Building Corporation and making an appropriation from such fund.
Yes, thank you. We have Maxwell Adams, he's in the Terrence department, go over here. He can walk you through some of the finer details of this resolution, any other general questions about financing. A quick summary that just established the fund for the sale proceeds for the actual property of the 911 disaster center will also go on. The county owns it currently, it'll go to the Hamilton Public Building Corporation so that it can lease it back to us, and Maxwell can explain a bit of that. Sorry, that. Steve Wood, I think, Steve, too, so if you have questions about the actual, the scoping period as well, he is back there to help answer any of those questions, too. So with that, Max, do you mind?
Thank you, Connor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Max Adams with Barnes &amp; Thornburg, serving as bond counsel to the county for the bonds to construct the 911 center.
Good evening.
Good evening. My colleague, Jeremy Ouland, was here, if you recall, last meeting to preview this additional appropriation. He sounds of regrets, he's traveling with family tonight, so I'm here to present the resolution itself. As the name, the title, you know, suggests, it pretty much covers everything. Does two major things. The resolution, one establishes a fund to hold the sale proceeds when the county actually sells the project site to the building corporation, so the building corporation can then lease it back to the county and use those lease rental dollars to pay off the debt service. Establishes that fund. Second thing it does is actually makes an appropriation. So at closing, when the county, or rather, the building corporation receives those bond proceeds and pays the county for the sale proceeds for the project site, we'll go into that and appropriates it to be able to go towards the project itself. So having answered any questions, I know you've had a month to brew on questions since we previewed the last meeting, so.
Very quickly, is there any public comment related to this resolution? I don't see any.
So I have a question.
I know, we'll move to motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Almost no proof.
Second.
Discussion.
So my question is, the building corporation's going to buy county property?
That's correct, yes.
And how much are they paying for it?
They're paying 1.6 million dollars, which is the amount that the county actually paid for the site.
Okay, and then we're going to use our 1.4 million, and we're throwing it in for that building?
The 1.6 million will go towards project, towards the project funds.
Okay.
So I think the plan is to deplete the 1.6 million on the county side, and then the building corporation has the rest of the bond proceeds, and then we'll work towards depleting those.
That's it?
So that's how it gets financed?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there additional questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you so much. Item G, Resolution CC 06052024-2, a resolution concerning the purchase of drainage easement for the E.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion here, sir? Connor, do you have any, that's okay, do you have any comments related to the resolution concerning the purchase of the drainage easement? I'll ask for a motion to approve first.
Motion approved.
Second.
I thought you already had that.
Yeah, we did.
I'm sorry.
That's right.
You did do it with the.
I did do it.
Mark did it. Yes, I apologize. Mark and Brad did it.
Thank you, my apologies.
For this, I, Madam President, I am not aware of where this drain is located in Hail County. Oh, you'd probably be the better one to.
Thank you. Thank you, Connor.
I was going to get off the hook.
No, you were not. I was just wondering where you were. Just kidding.
Well, I saw Connor jump up. He's going to do it. This project is east of Cicero, and this particular piece of ground is needed for the improvement to the existing open ditch from the outlet of the tile to Overdorff Road. Once we get to Overdorff Road, the slope of the open ditch greatly increases and falls like a rock to a white river, so we don't have to go any further than that. This is 3.023 acres of permanent easement that we'll be picking up for that project is the corner of Wake Ditch.
Is there any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much, Kevin. Item H, the interlocal cooperation agreement for joint financing of pedestrian bridge construction. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item I, ordinance number CC 06052024.A, an ordinance concerning the public safety training facility project.
So moved. Second.
Is there discussion?
Sure.
Okay, perfect.
We have Zach Clutz from the TAF Law Firm, he's bond counsel, he can answer questions. And Darren Peterson is the, from Peterson Architecture, is the architect. He is here right there. And I was going to have Steve, both of them provide an update. I don't know if you have a preference, if you want to hear about the financing part, and so Zach can get that part accomplished, or if you want to hear from the design firm first.
I'd like to hear about the financing.
That's why, you're the fiscal body, so that makes sense.
Good evening, Council, Zach Clutz with the TAF.
Do you have a prepared statement?
I do not have a prepared statement.
Okay, well, let me just ask you some questions, and we'll go through it from there, okay?
Sure.
So the redevelopment commission is using the excess TIF funds to pay for this particular project. Generally speaking, the project's supposed to be 20 million dollars.
Correct.
Okay? So, and I'm in favor of this project, all right? So tell me, how much cash that TIF has right now?
Well, I don't know how much cash.
Oscar, do you know? Give me between, get within a half a million dollars. Is it like 4.5 million dollars?
It sounds roughly about that, sir.
Okay, and then how much will the TIF district generate per year till it runs out to its life expectancy?
The revenues are roughly 2.5 million, or actually about 4.4 million dollars annually. The debt service will eat up most of that in the future years. There's already a bond that is being paid at roughly 777,000 dollars, and the new payment will be for the difference between what is being collected and the current bond. bond, so.
Now, what I'm really interested in, okay, we got 4.5 million, and then we got a bond that expires in, what, 36? 32. So between now and 32, we got 4.5 in cash, what's it going to generate? Not including the debt that's already occurred?
33 million dollars.
What?
33 million dollars.
So we're going to spend 20 million on the training center, does that mean there's 13 million dollars laying around?
No, you're going to have to use 8.5 million to pay your outstanding bonds.
Okay, I, I, I want to discount the outstanding bonds. What is the free cash available till 32?
23 million dollars.
23?
Correct.
Okay, so we got 4.5, and we'll generate 23 in additional revenues before it expires?
There will, correct, there'll roughly be, we're, because we have to have some coverage, there's going to be a 1.6 million dollars remaining of unused proceeds, assuming that nothing goes up between now and then.
Okay, if it, between paying the accountants and the lawyers, and the 20 mil-
I'll take the 1.6.
And the consultants and the finance guys, at, at the end, when, when that TIF expires and we built a 20 million dollar facility, there'll be 1.5 million dollars, but 1.3 million dollars left?
1.6.
1.6, if everything goes as planned?
Part of our plan of finance is because you are receiving a distribution now, we're accounting to use that distribution this year as part of the payments. Yeah, 1.4 million dollars of excess revenue from this year.
Okay.
From the 4.5, we're accounting for 1.5, if that's where you were driving it.
So, the 20 million for the facility, paying the hired help at the end of the life of the TIF district, 1.6 million, what was it, something like that?
Correct.
Less than 2 million dollars will be left?
Correct.
That's my only question.
Are there other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will move on. I will open the public hearing concerning additional appropriations, reductions, and transfers. Item A, general fund, first on the agenda, is the commissioner's additional for 21,946.16. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 1B, the 144 amendment.
Motion to approve.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 10A2, corner 144 amendment, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 3, court administration, first up is 144 amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, additional appropriation in the amount of 41,393 dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 3, see a transfer of 7,000 dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item D, discussion for new judicial officers, Judge Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
Great, how are you?
Boston long. I'd like to point, I was really close, Mr. Hall, you pointed out the shared differences. I think a lot of people forget about that. So, we circulated about a week ago, a memo to the council and to the commissioners. We were not necessarily expecting approval of what we're trying to do today, but we're trying to make sure you guys are aware of where we're at. I do have a slight update. I did meet with Judge Nation last week, and Judge Nation, when we had discussed, we went over the weight case loads, and I showed you that through the rolling average through the end of April of 17.7, we hadn't got our main daily yet at that point?
No.
Well, we got it today. It's like that planes, trains, and automobiles, you know, where they're on the wrong side of the interstate. We're still going the wrong way, and our numbers are still increasing. So our rolling average has gone from a 17.7 to a 17.87 need for judicial officers. In order for our rolling average to have gone up by a point two over the past month, we had to have 18 and a half judges worth of cases filed in the month of May. And there are 12 of us. I mean, that's a lot of stuff that's coming to the door. The real work on those cases is not tomorrow. It's six months from now, it's 12 months from now, it's 18 months from now. That's when the judges will be kind of like in freak out mode. Now, we know that in order to get judges, we can't, we're getting a juvenile magistrate, and that's on our, is our agenda item tonight, and we appreciate you guys' support with respect to that. And we'll get that position posted and bring our number up to 13. But as indicated in the memo, we're looking to add four more, at least that's what our request is going to be from the folks down at the State House. Even if we've got those four people, which, you know, we have to put our committee work in now, the ASC happens in the spring, we're not going to have those people, those bodies in our building until sometime in '26, or if they're elected judge positions, those people wouldn't take office until '27, and that's two and a half years from now. And we have 18 judges worth of work, now it's going to be 13 people. So, that will cause delays. That will, you know, we obviously have space, we know the county's going, we know that you guys all know this, we know that buildings grow in a sunny direction, and we've provided various conversations with commissioners or council people. It's a matter of whether we're going towards the river, we're going north. And I know you guys are figuring that out, but since we got the structure point survey, we want to make sure we let you guys know precisely where we're at as best as we can. In our memo, you saw the numbers, just showing the slide increases, even just giving a much smaller increase for, you know, '26 and '27, you know, around six and seven percent increase, which is not, we're way above that, we're double that right now per year, going with half of that. We're still looking at enough amount of cases that compared to where we were at in, it's like a 50% increase since 2020, in terms of the number of cases getting filed in our county. I mean, it's just, it's just growing, it's just, it is what it is. So, we're not expecting guys to, or yay tonight on what our ask was. We know that our ask to the legislature will look slightly different, it'll be a similar format to what we sent to you folks, but it'd be a little bit different, more tailored for the legislature and for our council, but we'd like your support when we make this ask for four judges. We don't think we're going to get the four, we'll be smoking happy if we get three, but I don't know what's going to happen downtown. And we'll work with our other, our house reps and our state senators, and do the best we can to get those judges for our counties we can, but we're going to have to have some space. We know it's going to require some different approaches to how we do business as judges, and how we use different spaces in the building. We don't, we're not thinking that every courtroom needs to be the same size, like, there, you can have courtrooms that are a little bit smaller and have, you know, have basically a right-sized courtroom for the right-sized matter that is being heard by the judge. But you're obviously not going to be able to run a jury trial in a very small courtroom, such as what we've used with magistrates, it's not going to work. But we have big courtrooms, and if it means we have to engage in some type of software for scheduling purposes, that may be something that we're going to approach with you folks and ask for. If we need, we know that if we get the approval, we know the building is not, the expansion doesn't happen like that, it's going to take time for the construction to occur. And I've talked with, with Mr. Hall, and Mr. Beaver, and Mr. Nation about this, it's going to take time. If it means we're all kind of bumping into each other for a year or two, that might be what we're doing. Another thought was with respect to the historic courtroom across the street, we currently use that two days a week right now. Maybe we use it five days a week. You know, that gives us some space, because right now it's a space issue. It's a personnel we need, and we need space to be able to do business, to be able to do the work that people need to do. So that may be another option, to use that as a little bit of a buffer as we work on building expansion. And we know you guys are handling that, and I saw the rough plans that Judge Nation provided. We came by, show me what was going on. I think Judge Block, he has copied those same things. So the judges, we have it, and we'll look at it. But we know that we're trying to work this project as best we can with you guys, and it's kind of a chicken and egg thing, like, because obviously your questions are going to be, well, where are you going to put them? Well, yeah, and what's everybody going to ask us downtown? Well, do you have a building that you're going to put, what's happening in your courthouse? Well, we're trying to expand our courthouse one way or another, you know, that's just where we're at.
Well, I think you'll be excited to know that we've come to an agreement to move to the west.
Towards the river?
Towards the river.
And to my understanding, that was going to provide a bigger square foot adoption idea?
Yes, absolutely. It'll provide greater opportunity to our growth, and so, and so as we move forward in that process, I'm certain that you will be engaged.
Definitely.
That's awesome.
Are there any other comments for?
That's where we're at, so we would really appreciate your support, and we don't got to put our package together for the legislature, and we're going to get that done. I'll work with our state reps and state senators on making sure it gets the right community properly, so.
Is there another magistrate in the future in lieu of while this ask for the four judges happens?
Well, as part of what we're, what we put in our memo is an ask for three elected and one magistrate, and then we already, we're picking up an out juvenile magistrate now. So that's where we're at at the moment. I think the one other thing that we're contemplating potentially for the budget next year would be, we have a commissioner that's part-time who does our 4D work, so part of, gives a big chunk of, I don't know. Robin, do you know if any of his salary is paid by the county or is all out of 4D funds?
So who is that?
Um, magistrate barrels, not, commissioner barrels?
It's all on 4D, I believe.
That's on 4D, I think, yeah.
That's where, we don't have anything coming out of county money for him right now. So the idea would be that we're thinking about, and the judges are still talking about this, the date is when we come in budget time, maybe turn that role into a full-time commissioner role, but have it do the 4D work two days a week, and that the 4D funds would pay for the two days of the salary of the five days, if you will, and then we'd have to have county funds, obviously, for the 4D. And again, it's kind of a little more band-aid in our process, but we're just trying to move forward. It gets us, at least that helps us with that location across the street, and maybe we're going to bump into some other departments, but it gets us a spot where we can get work done.
So nothing more than what was in the memo?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Thank you all.
Item four, buildings and grounds was pulled from the agenda, so we will move past that to item five, ISS 144 amendment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 5B, an additional appropriation in the amount of 100,798 dollars. Is there a motion?
What is that money for, Amy? So moved.
It has to do with enhancements to certain systems, risk in others.
Yeah, so there's two different pieces to that request. I think it's approximately 91,000 is a request that was submitted through the auditor's office for the proper tax enhancements. I think there's a description of those enhancements on there. The other item is a product from Civic Plus, which is our website provider called Next Request. Next Request is a way for the legal department to handle public records requests and make them, make the results available to the public, so there's not duplicate requests in a much more streamlined manner to handle those.
Okay.
Have any other questions or discussions?
That clears it right up.
Good deal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item six, HCM, we have a 1, H C E M, we have a 144 amendment.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six, be a transfer of 107,372 dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item seven, prosecutor 144 amendment, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Prosecutor, um, D, 144 amendment, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Highway, item 9A, 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, additional in the amount of 6,706,725.68, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Just, that's for 37.
What we going to spend 6,700,000 on?
This is, this is the remaining of our share for 141st.
And what we going to do?
We're going to put an interchange in there.
Yeah.
An over/under?
If, I'm not, we're going to go over/under, under/over, I'm not sure how you want to invert. I'm not sure of extremes.
I'm, I'm, it'll be an over/under.
It's a lot of money either way.
It is a lot of money. You'd go over a lot of times for 60.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're not going to start that this construction season, are we?
Any opposed? Seeing none. Uh, yeah, it's actually, I think, June.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what we need. Let's tear it up 37. We can't go down Allisonville.
I think it's this month.
You can't go down 32.
Yeah, no.
Let's go ahead and tear that.
It's going to be real fun, so just saddle up.
What?
19's going to be closed.
Well.
You're just going to have to stay home, Brad, 19.
I'll just get my plane out and fly down to Fishers.
All right, motion carries, moving on. Item nine, see a transfer of a half a million dollars.
So moved.
So moved. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 1159, the health department, 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 1159, health department is requesting permission to pursue a new part-time position. Hello again, Jason?
Sorry, I had a few things on the agenda this evening. Actually, I noticed, came under 1159.
My plan was actually to use 1161, which is our local health fund, our state appropriated dollars that we received. We are looking to bring on a part-time accreditation coordinator and a health improvement coordinator. As we move through the accreditation process, a huge part of that annually is plan updates and also quality improvement as us, as a health department, so we'd like to bring a position on so we can.
Did you say that was gonna be paid for by what?
By 1161, which is the local health fund, that's the state funds that we get.
Oh, okay. Do we already have a motion?
We need one.
We need it.
Would you like to give you one?
So moved.
Is there any discussion regarding his request? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C, 1168, local health maintenance, requesting $89,447.16, is there a motion for the additional?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll follow that with a reduction in the amount of $92,964.
I wanna make that motion.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 1171, major bridge, requesting $25,000.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
This was an item that was supposed to be, it should've been encumbered last year.
Ain't gonna get much for 25,000, are you?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Just a fee.
Fund 1206, local health department trust, requesting $75,285.11.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to the transfer in the amount of $43,500.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 1216, ineligible deductions transfer in the amount of $15,300.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 1219, Park and Recreation, requesting $979,970, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 1235, Lit, dedicated to PSAP, is an additional 1.1 million dollars, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 1237, opioid settlement restricted, requesting $400,000.
Madam President, I will make a motion for that, but the request of appropriation